Go ahead and call the meeting in the order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation, indivisible, with every due justice for all.
Okay, next is roll call.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Lindell.
Present.
Jeff Morford.
Here.
Doug Sasso.
Here.
John Kaper.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
Here.
Lauren Boyette.
Was this one of those where he was going to be gone and going to?
Yeah, we sent him a Zoom invitation. This was the meeting that it was going to be, he might be running a little bit late too, but he will Zoom in as soon as he's available.
Okay, all right, so.
And last but not least, James Parks.
Here.
All right. Next is public comment or audience participation for items that are not on the agenda. And public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Anybody wish to address counsel? All righty. Next is counsel. On the agenda is counsel acting as a liquor authority for a public hearing. And this is a public hearing before the City Council of the City of Fort Morgan acting as local licensing authority for the city to determine whether the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license by Victor Sushi III LLC at 119 West Beaver Avenue should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the city of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested parties in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required made by state law as to whether or not the application should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be concerned with throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlet applied for and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respect to the license. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are, quote, "parties of interest," end quote, who are defined by state laws being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, and owners or managers of businesses located in the neighborhood. Council has previously set the boundaries of the neighborhood for all city liquor licenses in the entire city. Does anyone present object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? Are there any disclosures from council members? If not, we'll proceed with the public hearing. The order of this hearing will be as follows. At the conclusion of the opening statements, the city clerk will give a summary of the preliminary investigation completed with regard to the application. The applicants will present their case, meaning they will present testimony, exhibits, petitions, and other materials relevant to the application. Interested parties may then testify for or against the proposed application, after which the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal. At the conclusion of all testimony, the council will make a decision to approve or deny the application. All testimony will be given under oath given by the city clerk. Any exhibits presented during the hearing will be submitted to the city clerk to become part of the record. The clerk's official files are hereby admitted into the record of this recording. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, it was posted on October 8th.
All right, and next is the presentation of the application by Ms. Curtis.
Thank you. So, like the mayor said, this is a public hearing on a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Victor Sushi. The applicant submitted their application for the hotel restaurant liquor license and paid the corresponding fees on September 2nd. The application was also reviewed by the city clerk's office, the city attorney's office, and the Fort Morgan Police Department, and it was deemed to be complete. On September 16th, the council acting as local liquor licensing authority accepted the application, and we set the public hearing for today. The applicant has the burden at this hearing to establish the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood, and the one form of evidence we use to do that is the needs and desires standard of signing the petition of the adults in the neighborhood. Copies of these petitions were included in your packets, and a review of the petition by the city clerk's office showed a total of 60 signatures, of which 14 had to be ruled invalid because the signers lived outside the city limits, and there is no number of signatures required. We've not received any written or verbal comments for or against the issuance of this license. The police department also posted notice on the property of the application for the new license for this public hearing. A fingerprint background check was completed with no findings. So, staff is recommending that the local liquor licensing authority weigh the evidence presented and make an objective decision on the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Victor Sushi III at 119 West Beaver.
Okay, next we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address the council, or does the council have any questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none. Next we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? And seeing none, I will ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, there were not.
Well, now proceed to council discussion. Any questions from the council or any discussion from the council? There be no further discussion by the council, I entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Next we'll go to council action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, council and mayor, you conducted a duly-held quasi-judicial public hearing. Everything is in good order with this application. There would have to be good cause to deny, and so we recommend approval of this application for the new hotel and restaurant liquor license.
Okay, any other discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution on an application for approval on the application for a new hotel and restaurant for Victor Sushi III LLC at 119 West Beaver.
All right, so, and I have a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
Oh, that resolution carries unanimously.
Did we count the guy up on the screen?
I did.
Yeah, we'll acknowledge his vote as a yes.
All right. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on a plat amendment for legacy townhomes at Center Point. This is a public hearing before the City Council of Fort Morgan acting as a local authority for the city to determine whether, now that's Victor Sushi again. We already did that one. This is a public hearing to keep the public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit the comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which event additional time will be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have already signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, it has. The postcards went out October 6th, and the agenda was posted October 17th.
All right. Next is presentation of the ordinance by Mr. Aker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the second phase of legacy townhomes development. If you'll recall, back in December of last year, they came before council and requested a change in their agreement to where they could do some triplexes along with fourplexes in their development. They're wrapping up the first phase. What they feel is the single-story triplexes sell quite a bit easier, so they'd like to do a mix of fourplexes and triplexes. They, when they originally proposed their development, what they were planning to do is take each phase down as the development caused them to do that with the interest in the development. So this is the second phase, but another Third Amendment of their plat. So what this does is they want to do a mix of a lot with fourplex intermixed with a lot with threeplexes on both sides of Justin Drive. And what this does is it replats, amends their plat to add this development to the property. The applicant was unable to attend tonight, but I told him I would try to attempt to answer any of the questions that you might have. So, this is just continuing their existing development.
All righty. Next we'll hear public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? If there's nobody who wishes to speak, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, there were none.
Well, now proceed to council discussion. Any questions from the council or discussion from the council? No further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to close or continue.
Motion to close.
Second. So I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, discuss. Public hearing is closed. Now we go to council action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, you have a lot of public hearings tonight. So you had duly-held quasi-judicial public hearing, and your analysis should be pursuant to Section 20-3-80 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, and I believe a, let's see, a requested action on page 58 of your packet.
All right. Any further discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution as presented, to approve the plat amendment for legacy townhomes at Center Point.
Second. Okay, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasso, a second by John Kaper. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. Next on the agenda is presentation possible action on the RFP for comprehensive plan update. Mr. Aker.
Great, thank you again, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, we were planning to do, start a comp plan update this year. It's been about 10 years since our last comprehensive plan was adopted. Earlier on the year, we, staff applied for, and we received a grant from DOLA to do this comprehensive plan update. We posted this RFP in August, on the, towards the end of August. We received eight different proposals, ranging in price from $86,000 to $244,790. A couple of staff members, myself, reviewed each of the app proposals, and we narrowed it down from eight to four, and then we narrowed it down to a final two, and we did interviews with the selected firms. Staff decided that the best comprehensive plan proposal is by Rick Engineering. They are very experienced working with smaller towns, especially on the Eastern Plain. They've done Kersey, Kingsburg, they've done Wiggins, they've done Burlington as well. So they are really a good fit for small rural communities. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion for Tom?
Did the DOLA grant cover that total?
No, it only covered 50,000 of it. We requested 80,000, and when they're, actually, when it first started out, then the regional director suggested 100,000, but their funding was such that they could only award us $50,000.
Any other questions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, a resolution accepting the Rick Engineering for not to exceed $142,755.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasso, a second by Jim Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, and we'll keep you involved as we're doing the comprehensive plan update.
All right, well, thank you. Next is presentation possible action on the RFP for audit service. Ms. Edson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In September, we went out to bid for audit services for our 2025 audit, and then with the option to do the subsequent two years. This is to audit our financial statements and to give an opinion as to whether we're handling our business in accordance with government auditing standards. We had six firms that bid, ranging in price from $49,000 to $32,500. We also interviewed three of the firms just to make sure that we felt like they would be a good fit for us, and we would like, we are requesting that staff approve the bid for Klinger-Hangerman in the amount of $32,500. They are the lowest bid in cost, but they also, I feel like, will be a good fit for us because they're a smaller firm that brings in a lot of experience. They're partners who had been at, previously at larger firms, and so they have a ton of experience in government finances specifically, but then they decided to branch out and open their own firm. So they have offices in Greeley, Colorado, and Laramie, Wyoming, and we would like to utilize them next year. Do you guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Casey?
So this is the first year we used them?
Correct. One of the partners has, has been at a firm that has previously audited us, so they do have experience with Fort Morgan.
Is it a practice to change it up every few years, the audit team?
Yeah, we, the last time we went out to bid, we had done a three-year agreement with them, and then when I was coming on, we stayed with them for one additional year. And so, we do kind of just mix it up every once in a while to make sure that we are staying, you know, that they still have an outside perspective on us, and that we're still getting the best deal as far as cost goes.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'll make a resolution to approve Klinger-Hangerman for audit services for the city of Fort Morgan not to exceed $32,500.
Second. Okay, so I have a resolution by John Kaper, a second by Jeff Morford. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty, thank you. All right. Next is, on the agenda is a public hearing for ordinance number 1319, the annual appropriation ordinance, an ordinance leveraging a tax on the taxable property in the city of Fort Morgan, Colorado, and appropriating monies to the several funds of said city. This is a public hearing, please keep public comment to the issues before the city council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which eventual event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations. I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it to be necessary in light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the issue of legal notice. Ms. Curtis, has this hearing been properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, it was posted on October 8th.
All right, next is presentation of the ordinance.
Good evening again. I'm here to, this is the final step in the budget process, so we've gone over the budget month after month. So we are here to levy the assessed tax of 13, sorry, 13.254 mils upon each dollar of assessed value for property, and then to appropriate the funds to the different funds. So we have the general fund for $18,808,563. The capital improvement fund for $9,601,635. The electric fund, $31,288,777. The water fund, $13,135,513. Gas fund, $6,316,373. Sewer fund, $17,127,257. Sanitation fund, $1,848,568. The perpetual care fund, $258,000. And the self-insurance fund for $6,691,105. So if you add them all together, our grand total is $105,075,791. And then, as we acknowledged the last time, we are budgeting to pull some money out of reserves specifically in the electric fund and the sewer fund, or larger amounts. Those monies have been saved up, and those are to, we are using those towards larger projects that we've been saving for. So there are plenty of funds to cover those.
Okay. And next we'll hear public comments. Anyone here who wishes to speak on this issue? If there's not anyone else, anyone in the public who wishes to speak on this issue, I'll ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
No, there were not.
And now we proceed to council discussion. Any questions from the council or any discussion of the council? Now, with this one, the mill levy is the same as it was last year, correct?
Yes, yeah, correct. The mill levy has not changed.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? In that case, I'd entertain a motion to close the discussion.
Motion to close.
Second. Okay, so I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Jeff Morford. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All righty. Next is council action. Ms. Williams.
Yes, Mayor and Council, everything is in order with this legislative public hearing, and your recommended action is on page two of the agenda.
All right, so, any further discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution to approve ordinance 1319 adopting the 2026 budget, set the mill levy and appropriate monies to various funds within the city of Fort Morgan, and authorization to publish by title only.
Second. Okay, so I have a resolution by James Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously. Thank you.
All righty. Next is presentation possible action on a land, on approval of a local landmark status. Ms. Nyder Engel.
Good evening. The Fort Morgan Historic Preservation Board would like to recommend approval and designation of the Sutton Building located at 215 Main Street for individual local landmark status. The building meets two major areas of the historic designation criteria, including the site of a significant historic event or original location of a historical property, and the exhibition of indigenous qualities of an architectural style or material that is particularly associated with the Fort Morgan area. Built in 1909 by B.J. Sutton, this building housed the USA Theater, one of three indoor theaters operated in downtown Fort Morgan, with the other two being the O'Reed and the Cover Theater, built in the 300 block of Main Street. The theater occupied the first floor of the building with offices on the floor above. Although its relatively small size of 32 feet wide would indicate otherwise, it had a seating capacity of 300, arranged in continental plan format. Reportedly, the USA Theater primarily showed second-run films and eventually closed, leaving the larger Cover Theater to serve the community. Fire was a constant concern for all early theaters, and stories of a fire in the USA Theater are reinforced by the fact that the theater's projection booth was remodeled in 1932 to make it more fireproof. After its tenure as an entertainment venue and movie theater, the building was vacant for several years in the early 1950s before eventually being occupied as the Two Bills Recreation Parlor in 1959. Eventually, it became the site for Sears Roebuck Company, the iconic department store and mail-order retailer. As noted previously, it exhibits the indigenous qualities of an architectural style or material that is particularly associated with the Fort Morgan area. The Sutton Building represents a transition from the Victorian functional style, which characterized the town's early structures, to the classical revival style, which was more classically derived, an expression that is being, that was being adopted for commercial buildings at that time throughout the country. The building's two-story facade sports a corbelled brick cornice, belt courses, and pilasters, as well as double-hung windows and two diamond-shaped iron beam anchors above the second-floor windows. The current owners, Carolina and Luis Longoria, have taken great pride in the 9,600-square-foot building and have given the lower-level part of the building a facelift that helps highlight the beautiful clothing, accessories, and other merchandise they sell at Las Va- Vaquitas, sorry. The Fort Morgan Historic Preservation Board appreciates your consideration. If approved, it will be the 29th structure to have received the local landmark designation status in Fort Morgan. Thank you.
All right. Any questions or discussion? In that case, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution to recognize 215 Main Street, former Sutton Building, and as an individual local landmark.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by Lauren Boyette, a second by Jim Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Next is, on the agenda is presentation possible action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code about enforcement of weed violations and request to set a public hearing for November 4th. Chief Sharp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Purpose for this is essentially, the ordinance as it's written is somewhat confusing. We've had a couple people that were confused by what it says. If you look at the ordinance, we have Section 1 and Section 2. Section 1 deals with the violation itself, which allows us, authorizes us to issue summonses. Section 2 is about the abatement, so if somebody doesn't abate the property on their own, then the city could abate, and then it goes through those steps. We had a couple people that were confused, thinking that we had to follow Section 2 instead of Section 1, and they didn't understand that they're two separate things. So, working with the city attorney's office, there was another part of that also in Section 1. It appears sometime probably over 15 years ago, the ordinance was changed, and they forgot to remove a section that referred to Section 170, I believe, that doesn't even exist in the current ordinance, so we need to remove that part. But all this does is really changes the language to make it more clear that they are two totally separate sections, so if you are in violation, you can get a summons, and if you don't clean it, then there are steps we can do to abate it, and it clearly defines what those steps are, which were clearly defined, but not clearly defined as different sections, if that makes sense. So, that's, that's all we're asking for in here, we just clarify the language and remove an old section that is no longer in it.
All righty. Any questions or discussion? If not, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, for resolution on first reading of the ordinance amending the municipal code enforcement of weed violations and request to set a public hearing for November 4th to 2025 is presented by Chief Sharp.
Second.
Okay, so I have a resolution by Doug Sasso, and a second by Jim Parks. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All righty. Next is presentation possible action on the first reading of an ordinance amending the municipal code concerning the feral cat protocols and request to schedule public hearing on the ordinance for November 4th. Basically, this is, the ordinance is to remove a previous ordinance that we already have that prohibits releasing cats back into the city. You know, we've talked about how it is before, and the ladies at the shelter felt really bad when they had the last resolution when this came up, and it was tight. Like I said, this isn't establishing the program or anything else. This does put some parameters down, but basically it just allows us to go ahead with the planning and everything. And so, anyway, the ladies from the shelter are going to present.
First of all, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My name is Karen Benker. I'm president of the Fort Morgan Humane Society. And before we go too much farther, I did want to thank our- want to thank our mayor for being a very good supporter of our humane society. You have done some wonderful things for us. You became one of our participants, shall I say, in our lockup last December, where you volunteered to sit in a kennel with one of our, one of our homeless dogs, and you had to call your friends and family to bail you out. So with that, we want to thank you. And with that, with that, I'd like to introduce Leslie Vogt. She is founder of Friends of Ferals. She is here tonight from Fort Collins. She founded this nonprofit about seventeen years ago, and she is definitely one of the state experts in trap neuter release and the ins and outs, and I think you'll also find she has some interesting stories to tell. So with that, Leslie?
Good evening, council members. I'm Leslie Vogt, and I'm the director of Northern Colorado Friends of Ferals. And as Karen mentioned, we started this seventeen years ago, and in that period of time, we fixed sixteen thousand-plus cats and vaccinated them. We also find homes for kittens and tame cats.
Could you speak into the mics?
Yes.
Yeah.
We've also found homes for many thousands of kittens and also quite a number of tame cats that were stray and had nowhere else to go. This all began, began when I was a member of the board of directors in our local shelter, and I was on the board for seven years and was fairly underwhelmed with what was happening with the cat population. And I was also aware that tens of millions of cats, healthy cats, were being killed in shelters all over the country, and that shelters didn't seem to be doing much to prevent this, including our shelter. So, once I timed off of the board, I decided to dig into this a little bit, and found, first of all, that eighty percent of all feral cats at that time were not fixed, and only two percent of domestic cats were not fixed. So, it didn't take much to figure out that the problem with the cats in the shelters came from feral cats and their kittens and their kittens' kittens. So, more research, more research showed me that TNR is really the only humane way to stabilize these populations, reduce, ultimately reduce them, not overnight, but ultimately reduce them, improve the behavior of the cats roaming the streets, and even solve some public health issues as we, we always vaccinate them for distemper and rabies. Our group started in two thousand and nine with just a few volunteers and three committed high-volume veterinarians who were willing to help us for free then. We borrowed clinic space from local clinics one Sunday a month and did our surgeries there. We stored cats after trapping and before returning in our garages. And at that point, we were charging sixteen dollars for a spare neuter, and, including vaccinations. We now charge forty. The costs to us at NCFF are about eighty dollars. The difference is made up with donors, donations, and grants. We currently actually are renting space, which has been a godsend, so that we have a place to store traps, medical supplies, and, and do the surgeries in a clean environment. We do monthly surgeries, one month surgery day per month, where we do a hundred cats plus. During those surgeries, we treat these animals for a variety of issues: upper respiratory, fleas, abscesses, other kinds of parasites, even some dental work. We're not able to do very much, but we can help out a little bit in that way. All of our cats get pain meds, and many of them receive antibiotics before they go home. As I mentioned before, kittens and tame cats go into foster for ultimate adoption. So in order for us to trap cats, we have to manage the food supply, because only a hungry cat will go into a trap. So we work with colony caretakers. They're usually people who call me and say, I'm feeding fifteen cats, I cannot afford to get them fixed. And so, we work with them to withhold food just before we come. So up until that point, they're feeding twice a day, or once a day is plenty, but they withhold food taste two days before our trapping, so the cats will actually go in. So, having hungry cats is important to be able to trap them, but you don't want them hungry all the time, because then they wander the streets and become a nuisance, and I'm sure you know about that here. That's why telling people in, in towns not to feed cats is really counterproductive, because you're not managing the food source and keeping them in places where they are being fed, instead of going all over the place. Along the same lines, leash laws for feral cats that prohibit releasing fixed, ear-tipped, and vaccinated cats back where they were found or into their colonies is also counterproductive. These cats end up, especially feral ones, being dropped off at shelters, and then shelters have to figure out what to do with a feral cat that can't be adopted. Often, they are euthanized. Over the years, several communities in Colorado have, have asked us for help. The most notable one was the work we did in Sterling in two thousand and fourteen, where we fixed seven hundred and fifty cats. It was, it took three weekends, but made a big dent in the population. And more to the point, we encouraged people there to trap cats, and they're still doing it ten years later and bringing them down to our clinic in Fort Collins to be fixed. We also have had contracts with Evans, Wheatland, Wyoming, LaSalle, and Kimball, Nebraska. Typically, those contracts called for the city to pay us thirty dollars a cat to fix them and return them, and vaccinate them. Small communities like Fort Morgan can really benefit from TNR, especially when it's done aggressively, lots of cats fast. So, at thirty dollars a cat, it really is cheaper than sending the cats to shelters where they incur costs like boarding, labor, food, transportation, sometimes euthanasia. While many folks just want these cats to go away, it, it just isn't that easy. So, seems to me that addressing the issue through TNR is really a win-win proposition for everybody. It stabilizes the cat population, and the cats that have been fixed and are released are much better cats. They're far less a nuisance. They're not wandering, yowling, and just being, being a pain. So, it's also a win-win for the cats that can stay in their homes or their familiar locations, and all at a lower cost than sending them to shelters. So, you have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion from council? I know that last time, a bunch of guys said, well, I just didn't feel like I had enough information that voted against it, so I thought I'd try and improve that. Any other questions?
Your Honor, I may add something, if you don't mind. Last time I said, and I, I will reiterate, I, I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to the program by any means. My concern would be our labor costs or cost to us for vet bills and so forth. I've been, I've spoken with our code enforcement since that time. They've assured me that they believe this could be done at no cost to the city and no work to us. I also am under the understanding that the Humane Society believes they would be able to get grants to pay those costs. So what this ordinance would actually be doing is allowing us to, to look into that possibility. It does say that it would go through the police department, so if we looked at it and we said it's going to cost us money or time or whatever, and we choose not to do it, we would never have to do it. It would just allow us to do it. Frankly, I haven't spent the time looking into the program, because if it doesn't pass, then there'd be no reason for us to do that. If it does pass, we would be able to look into it, ensure that the cost is not either going to be any cost to us, or that the cost would be manageable and something the council would be comfortable with before we ever proceed with it. So, I just wanted to say, I didn't have that information last time. That is information I have now.
Alrighty. Good. Anybody else? Anything else?
You know, I, I do have to say that there has been people that have contacted me on this, and unfortunately, they just want the cats gone. They don't want them released back in their neighborhood. So that is a concern. I've had more people contact me with that than the vice versa. So...
I, and I understand that. I mean, you know, feral cats typically, and that's always been the approach, but what they've found out, you know, I used the analogy last time, it's kind of like having a pool of water, and you go in and you take a five-gallon bucket out, the water just comes in to take its place.
Understand.
Which would be, you know, the same thing that happens with the feral cat population. So, I understand they would just like them removed, but that's kind of like saying, I'd like to have all of our streets repaved at the same time. Just some, not a realistic thing. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, you, you probably do know that, I know the police department certainly knows this, that we routinely have feral cats brought into the Humane Society. We do not euthanize them, but for those that cannot be tamed, we do then adopt them out as barn cats. And so, oftentimes, though, those cats that are brought in by the police department are often pregnant. And so, we have a lot of kittens, and those are the ones that, of course, will go to, you know, folks here in Morgan County that are interested. And sometimes when we have too many kittens, we do try transferring them to other humane societies on the Front Range or in the mountains. So, we are getting feral cats now. We understand that there might be some neighborhoods that would not be interested in having them returned, but we'd be working with the community. You would be running the program, and we would write some grants to fund the program, if that was the direction that you wanted to go in.
Your Honor? Excuse me, Your Honor?
Yes.
Yeah. What I would want to say here is that I'd love the opportunity to have a public hearing. I, I really personally would like to encourage folks to be involved in this discussion with us. And right now, what we're talking about is just having the ability to have a discussion, not to change any ordinance, but to amend the existing ordinance to allow us to have a discussion, because as a current ordinance is written, as I understand it, we just can't trap and release. So, if we are, we're just amending so that we can talk about a new ordinance that would allow this, and a public hearing would allow folks to come in and, and plead their case. But, you know, I believe being humane is a choice we have to make, and it says a lot about, you know, demonstrating our, you know, our humanity by how we treat other species that share this planet with us. So, I really would like to push for an ordinance, or push for a public hearing.
You took the words right out of my mouth there, Lauren. You know, tonight, I don't necessarily think we need to get in the weeds about how many cats we serve or any of that. And I guess, like Lauren says, we can discuss that at a public hearing, and whether this goes forward at that point, I guess, would be, at that time, would be a decision we'd make. But I agree with Lauren. I agree with Jeff. I did have a lot of calls that say, I don't want these back in my yard, but I got, that's a, a direction we can, we can discuss later, at a, like you said, a public hearing. Yeah. And again, like we said, this is just getting rid of the impediment to setting up a program and everything.
Just, oh, go ahead. I thought you were done.
No, I'm, I'm done enough. Go ahead.
Oh, just to confirm, so this is not changing the ordinance for the law tonight? This is just to schedule a public hearing to change it?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, anyway, I think that we have good information, and we also know that we're not making the decision other than to have a public hearing. So, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution amending chapter seven of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code to include trap neuter and stay protocols for community cats, and to schedule a public hearing for November fourth.
I second.
All right. So, I have a resolution by Lauren Boyette, a second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right.
You might take a look at page five of that ordinance. I don't think you work here anymore.
I was going to say the same thing.
Oh, yeah, we, we inserted the previous one.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda is discussion direction on police department traffic enforcement. Chief Sharp?
Thank you, Your Honor. As you know, last year, or a couple of years ago, I was directed to get some information on speeding with the speed cameras that would also issue summonses at no cost to the city. We did find Avio is a company that does such thing, or Let's Drive Safer. I think it's both. I don't know what it's called, but. Mike is here to talk about it. We set up cameras in our city over a few days, a couple of weeks ago, and he has some data to support, so, or to show, so that we can determine how you guys would like to proceed at this point.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Mike Venable, with a company called Avio, and we do automated traffic enforcement devices. Over the last five years, you know, the roadways are feeling more unsafe than ever before. You know, when I go out and talk to municipalities all across Colorado, pretty much every time, the number one thing that police departments hear about is traffic safety. And that is really borne out in the numbers. The numbers on pedestrian fatalities, cyclist fatalities, general serious injuries overall are all very much on the rise. And even as overall traffic deaths have started to fall a little bit from the high watermark in twenty twenty-three, those pedestrian and cyclist deaths continue to climb. There's definitely a, a major issue all across Colorado and the rest of the country with traffic safety. We, Avio is a company that has been around for about two and a half years. We were founded by two gentlemen who built a dash cam product for a company called Motive that worked to serve the large trucking industry. It would determine when the driver was following too close, not stopping when they were supposed to, speeding, different types of dangerous behaviors, and report that behavior back to the driver and to the driver's employer. And this was a very, very successful business for them. They installed these cameras in over two hundred thousand vehicles and were able to reduce the amount of crashes by twenty-five plus percent. And so, they started thinking how they could apply that type of technology more broadly to public safety, and Avio was born. So what we are trying to accomplish is really ushering in a new era of traffic safety. You know, we believe that there's a lot of value in the work that Chief Sharp and his team does. The education that you get from an officer to a citizen during a traffic stop is very important, but it doesn't really scale. And so, you know, we are introducing devices that are low-cost and highly powerful. They are all solar-powered and cellular-enabled, so they're very easy to deploy. As long as you can get a permit, you've got a clear path to the sun, we can generally put a camera there. And we build strong relationships with the community to try and make sure that they understand why these programs are important and relevant and impactful. We're currently working on a driver behavior study in partnership with Bicycle Colorado that will generate some really great data all across the state about the ways that people are traversing the roads. Our technology is pictured here. We've got kind of a more traditional unit on the left. It can be decorated up. This one's decorated by some schoolchildren. On the right is a more modern unit that we're developing. The solar panel is not there, because the panel is actually built into the pole. But as you can see, these are good-looking units. They're not some big monstrosity that's hanging over your road and looking like it's going to fall on somebody's car or something like that. It's built to blend in with your landscape and, and not be an eyesore. These cameras can do a variety of different types of enforcement: speed, red lights, stop signs, illegal turns, you know, all different types of things. And they can do all those different things from a single unit. So, you can keep your overall cost down by not having to deploy a lot of different technology. We have what we call a cost-neutral proposition to the city, which means that the violator fines would totally fund this program. There's a performance guarantee, so if at any point it gets to the point where the fines are not funding the program, then, you know, we're, you're not on the hook to pay us for those. And we are able to be in compliance with all the Colorado laws to be able to create a community warning period, make sure that everybody is aware of these things, and that, that they're not taking anybody by surprise. We also create a community portal, a website, that you can... We also create a community portal, a website that you can be shared publicly, shows all the different places where the cameras are. People can actually go watch videos of violations, all the, you know, any kind of personally identifiable information is blurred out, the plates are blurred out on anybody's face that ends up in the, in the videos. But it is a publicly available website where you can go and see this information and start to really get a sense of the scale of the problem. It also gives the top line numbers of how many violations that you're seeing. And when you start to see some of the numbers, people kind of realize maybe there's a, more of a traffic crisis than they realized. We provide materials to the community to show their support for the program, whether that be bumper stickers, you know, yard signs, things like that, and are committed to continuing to partner with organizations like Bike Colorado and other advocacy groups to make sure that the, the community is informed and aware. As far as privacy is concerned, something we take very seriously, all of the images that are taken by these cameras remain on the device unless they are flagged for a violation or law enforcement requests them in association with an investigation. If one of those two things doesn't happen, the images never leave the device and no one ever sees them. There's not some database being built of these, you know, if you don't commit any sort of a violation, then no one will ever even see the image of, of your vehicle. These were the locations that were chosen for the pilot. The color code is just to illustrate that all of the green ones are in school zones. The pink one is in an area adjacent to a park. So over 90% of these locations that we picked were either school zones or parks. We did the one last one up there at Burlington and Dahlia, just to kind of show some speed information. What we saw, and these are two different numbers, the, the top larger number is just any person who is speeding at all, one mile an hour over the speed limit. So 41% of all the vehicles that we saw across those four intersections or four, four areas were speeding. Now, that's not the people you would actually send citations to. Generally, we're only going to send citations to people that are 10 miles an hour over. And that's the number that you see there at the bottom. So about 41% of all vehicles were speeding at all. About 7% of those were speeding to a degree at which you would actually cite them. And those numbers are pretty consistent with what we tend to see with these out anywhere that we do them. We did two other different types of cameras. We looked at stop signs and we looked at crosswalk pedestrian yield violations. We saw 41% of all the vehicles daily that went through one of these stop signs did not stop at the stop sign. And then 73% of those that went through when they should have been in a situation to yield to a pedestrian did not yield. Those numbers are fairly consistent too. The stop sign numbers may be slightly lower, but 6,130 violations per day is a pretty staggering amount when you start to, you know, stretch that out over the course of a month or longer. What we have seen in the past, we worked with a county in Maryland that was having a major issue with stop signs. They had had an, an incident where two schoolchildren were hit by a car and killed on the way to school. Unfortunately, the community was very, very interested in getting a law passed to allow for automated enforcement on stop signs. We worked with the legislators there and in about five months, we're able to get a law passed to do that. And after installing upwards of 100 cameras over time in that county, we saw anywhere from a 40 to 70% reduction in stop sign violations in as little as six weeks in some of those cases. So very effective technology in slowing people down, getting to stop at stop signs, pretty much anything that the cameras are, are meant to do. And so that's, that's pretty much it. We are really just sharing the data here tonight. I do have a website, like the one that I showed you for, for Morgan, that we can share with you that has more detailed information about each individual place where the cameras were installed for the pilot. And if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
The only thing I would add, if I could, is, is we chose those specific places as pilots for reasons. Burlington certainly is an area we see a lot of speeding. We, we write a lot of tickets there. Vicki and Riverview is another area that we see a lot. And then we chose Akoma and Southwest because we see stop sign violations over there and it's a school zone. And then we chose the areas of the high school and, and Columbine for the same reason. Then there was the area on Main Street. We don't see it. We run traffic on Main Street. We don't see a lot of violations. And so we put this out there because we get a lot of complaints. You guys see it all the time that people are racing up and down the street on Main Street and that actually had a very low number of speeding violations. I think only 25%, at that intersection, I think it said, only 25% of all vehicles are even going one mile an hour over at, at that speed. So we clearly probably do have some going excessive speeds, but it's a very low percentage compared to some of the other streets. So we strategically put them in there in places that we thought would be beneficial for us to see and, and worked with Mike to do that for that purpose.
I would comment, social media is always a pleasant part of our job. And I noted this last week and I sent it to Chief Sharp. The town of Kersey has a similar system. I don't know if it's yours or not. People started receiving summonses in that area and for Kersey, I didn't know they had that many people to, they could write tickets to. But boy, it was quite, they were quite articulate and vocal about the displeasure of how it was being handled. So that was just one of my observations. Again, social media, we know what it is on both sides. We also hear the complaints of the speeding and the stop signs. So I just put it out there that it's quite interesting to follow up on.
Yeah, I looked at your website. It was pretty interesting. I, I, I see quite a bit of that because I walk around town quite a bit. It's, it's one of my, one of my hobbies, just walking around. And yeah, I, I, I was really impressed with it and I couldn't find where the cameras were. I know their angle and stuff, but I kept looking for them just to, just to kind of check it out. But I, I thought, I thought it was very impressive and I kind of, you know, I, I know what, where John's coming from on that. As soon as people, people think they're being watched, you know, they'll be a little more cautious and really that's what it's all about. I mean, it's just a safety thing. So, but anyway, I wanted to tell you, I did, I was quite impressed with your, with the website because it had the, well, you know what it had on it.
Sure.
But anyway, it was kind of.
Thank you.
From a procedural standpoint, I know this is just for discussion now and nobody's asking to, to vote on anything or anything like that. But from a procedural standpoint, if the council were to choose to pursue something like this, we would have to then change an ordinance because we'd have to have an ordinance written to allow that type of photo radar to be used or those cameras to be used. And I know, I'm talking to Mike, that's something obviously between them and the attorneys, we'd have no problem doing. But that would be something that would be necessary if you choose to go that route. And then after that, I assume the fines and all that are set by that. And then as he said, there's a cost per camera and out of those, so that, so that it's not looking like a money grab on our side, whatever that cost is, is going back to them up to the amount of that cost. Anything above that would come to the city. If there is anything above that, if there's, if it doesn't meet that level, then there's no cost to us. They would eat the, the cost of that. So that's how that works, so.
Lauren, I haven't heard you discuss, but I think it was, I brought it before. If there is a violation, you send a video clip to the police department. They're required to review that, an officer is, and then make an assessment from that video of proceeding with a summons or saying no.
Yes, and Mike, jump in at any time if I'm, if I'm saying something wrong.
Sure.
But they would send those videos to us. We would have to have somebody look at them. We would certainly set a parameter. As he said, we're not writing tickets to anybody going one over the speed limit. That's not something that parameter would be set. Also a stop sign we would choose, do we want it to be a complete stop? Do we want to say they have to be at least five miles an hour over the speed limit? I mean, five miles an hour when they go through the stop sign, it would be considered violation. Whatever those parameters we set would be there. And then only those violations would be sent to us. We would look at it to make sure that it's a violation or that it's not, you know, a marked police car driving somewhere with their lights and siren on at that time or whatever the case may be. And then we would be able to, then we would do it. If it goes to court, it's a civil infraction, doesn't account against your driver's license, but if they were to go to court, their team would come in and testify, there'd be nothing on our end from that perspective. It would take a person pushing a button and saying, yes, we believe this is a violation, then they would send the summons, they would deal with all of that.
That's right. I would just add to that, that we would be sending the video of the violators incident to them as well, if they ended up getting cited. They get, you know, a ticket in the mail. It's got a link to be able to go to a website where they could watch the video of their car going through, whatever, you know, situation happened.
So what's a, what's the parameters, I guess, on fines? Do we, have we set that? Do you set that or how does that?
You would set that as a part of the whole ordinance process. No points associated with this. The guidance from the state has generally been that the red light and speed tickets are $75. They can be doubled in a school zone. Anything else would be a $40 fine, no points.
And it's a civil infraction that gets sent to collections essentially if it's not paid. Doesn't go against their driver's license or anything.
It's been a while. What is the normal stop sign ticket now? Four points and how much?
I, you know, stop sign, I believe it's $75 plus the surcharge, but I'm not 100%.
Yeah, okay. Hasn't changed too much. My only concern here is you're eliminating where you make it so cheap that people will pay these fines, which is okay. But, you know, we have Jason in municipal court. Those tickets would not be coming down like normal. You have a municipal judge that we are paying as he become even more part-time because people choose to pay these $40 tickets and no points. I think that the, you make it cheap enough, people will just pay the fine and, and go through. We're a normal officer writing that ticket. I, I, I just don't think we've set, think about this, there could be some ramifications to personnel.
And I will say, whether we do this or don't do this, our position wouldn't change of the aggressive law enforcement position would still be there. We would still be working speeding. We'd still be working all those violations, which pardon my report to you tonight as well. But we would still be doing that. We just may not be doing it in the area where this camera is. I mean, there may not be a need in that area because that would be 24/7. It would give us the ability to do it in another area where we may have a problem somewhere else. It wouldn't replace what we're doing. We wouldn't say we're not going to work any traffic. And certainly a lot of our violations that we, the majority of the violations that we stop people for are not speeding. There's still other traffic violations that we would be addressing, but, but that's going to be whether we stick with this or whether we do a program like this or we don't do one, that wouldn't change on our end.
Yeah, that's, that, that's kind of what, what I, what I thought about is that it would kind of free up the officers. You know, again, I've never been a police officer, but, and you guys have, but it would free up the police officers a little bit more to, to do other concerns. But I guess we'd have to talk to people that have actually done that, you know, like Jim and John and Doug, you know, to see what, what their opinion is. But for me, that's, that, that, that was something that I looked at and I thought, well, this would free up officers on other corners. And on top of that, people would be attuned to the fact that there is, there is a camera watching you, you know, be a little more cautious. It's the same thing you do when you're driving down the street and first thing when you, when you see a, a police officer coming towards you, you know, right away you look at it, how fast am I going, you know? So, I mean, that's the way I look at it. But again, I might, I have a different perspective.
I think there's no question it would free up that and to do other things or do even the same area, but different things. I also know as, as John is alluding to, I think there's, there's a political component to that that you guys have to feel comfortable with. I understand both sides of that. Certainly I think, I think their data would show and it only makes sense that you would have less violators because even though people might have to pay 40 bucks, most people don't want to pay 40 bucks a day for running a stop sign or, or whatever the case may be, right? So it will probably decrease those violations to what extent and to what, what political side of it is there. That's, that's the other part that.
So are these cameras permanently placed this or they moved around periodically?
We have both options. You generally, most of the cameras that we do are more permanent installs. And, you know, that's kind of part of the reason why there's the performance guarantee on there. You know, we're really committed to solving the problem and over time, there should be less violations. That means it's working. If it gets down to the point where it's no longer paying for itself, you know, we're not going to charge you because we, we've solved the problem. And so, yeah.
What kind of contract are we talking about, timeline?
Our standard agreement is generally a two-year contract.
Two-year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
There is signage and stuff, so moving them around, I mean, you would want to have signage, you're warning people that this is what's going to happen, so that you're not just trying to blindside them and take their money. You want them to understand that there is.
Yeah, you have to have a sign 300 to 500 feet before any of these types of cameras that are out there. And then at the beginning of the program, you do a 30-month kind of announcement, warning period where it's, the cameras are there, they're active, they're sending out warnings that, that do not have any sort of fine associated with them for 30 days.
But the warning wasn't placed for this study, was it?
No.
Okay.
Well, what let's do is, let's just, I just want to see if everybody wants to pursue this as far as further discussion, because we need to discuss it, decide about an ordinance or maybe, you know, have them draw up the ordinance for the first reading or whatever. But what do you think, John?
Thanks. Started on the right. Sorry, my mic was off. Boy, I really struggle with this. I'm probably one of the violators, that's probably why.
All right.
I will not confirm nor deny that.
What's that?
I will not confirm nor deny.
Yeah.
All right. How about you, Doug?
I'm a no.
No?
I'm a no.
You know, I really believe that our officers need to get out there and instruct these guys and talk to them instead of just sending a ticket to them. So I, I, I think I'm a no as well.
Well, no, I'm, I, I was impressed with the website. I think that it's gonna, it would be good for, be good for safety. I think it would alleviate some, some issues or some, the officer's time. I mean, for me, I'm, I, you know, if you know some, if you know somebody's watching, you might not do it. So, yeah, I definitely.
Yeah.
I'm, what I, I'm nervous about and hesitant about is the officers being part of the community and getting out. And there are times that people make a violation or do a violation, but the conversation is not there. They're just getting the ticket and I have a hard time with that. And based on that, I'll tell you now.
Lauren?
Wow. You know, I'm never opposed to talking about things. I have not heard anything, any responses from any folks in town who might have noticed. I have seen a couple of social posts wondering what they were. I do, like Bill, I walk the neighborhoods every day, at least in my ward, put in a lot of miles. I am guilty or have been guilty of going, let's just say a mile over the speed limit. So I wouldn't get one of those. But the information that they provided on the numbers of, of current, you know, just on the, on the pilot program were pretty impressive. The video is extremely clear and impressive. I guess my biggest worry is you're setting up two different classes of tickets, right? So some people are going to be ticketed by an officer and that will carry different ramifications of some people who are ticketed by a camera. I don't necessarily really like that, but I really am always interested in hearing from, from voters and, and residents. So I wouldn't be opposed to moving forward and having, moving to a public hearing and, you know, I know we're going to have a lot of flack, that's for sure. I wouldn't want to receive one in the mail, but I do like to have public input.
And personally, I'm not in favor of Big Brother, but I do like the way, I mean, the statistics were pretty convincing about trouble areas that we'd worry about. were pretty convincing about trouble areas that we'd worry about. And Lauren had said it really wouldn't affect the patrolmen patrolling. But I guess we already have four who have said that they would be against it. So I guess for now, it will be tabled until a further time. But do appreciate, I think you're doing a great job. Great service.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, next is on the agenda's discussion direction on golf carts on the city streets.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll get things started. I know this is one of those issues. I've had a few people reach out to me and want to know if the city would allow for that change. At the time I talked to these residents, I said, well, the policy changes have to come from councils. So I said, if you're really passionate about it, I would, you know, seek out a council member and talk to them. This is one of those issues. I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't have a golf cart or an ATV or anything to ride down the street. So, but it, I know the mayor was approached about this subject, and we started having a conversation in one of the mayor's meetings. It was shortly after that I was in one of my, I have fairly regular meetings with county commissioners just to see if there's things going on that both our jurisdictions need to be aware of, and if there's things that we need to be working on. This is an item that has come up in front of the county commissioners, and they are, they are moving forward with allowing for golf carts and ATVs that meet the regulations to be allowed on their, on their sections of road. And so they were wondering if it was something we were going to take up. So I talked to Kevin and said that, you know, it seems that maybe we should talk about this and see if there's a desire. The county would like to see us enact something that's similar to theirs if we choose to go that direction. So the rules that you have when you're on a county road, and if you transition over to a city road, would be the same. So I can understand their desire to have that consistency. But tonight, this is like the previous item. This is just a conversation piece for the seven of you to discuss. And if there's a desire to see golf carts and ATVs that, you know, meet a certain classification on our streets, we can move forward with the necessary discussions with the attorney's office on what language needs to be changed in our, in our current code. So with that, I will open it up. Kevin, I know you were contacted, so...
Yeah, I was contacted by a group of senior ladies who asked me why we didn't allow golf carts. And I said, I don't know. I didn't know that we didn't. But anyway, I think they're looking at retirement communities that you hear about in Arizona and Florida where a lot of people use their golf cart kind of like their family car to run around town rather than using a car easier to park, easier access, that sort of thing. And so the rule that I understand in talking with Chief Sharp and everybody would be that you can't drive them on county highways, I mean, state highways. So they wouldn't be able to drive them on Platt and Main and Riverview because those are state highways. They could cross them, but they couldn't drive on them. But otherwise, and I know we're getting ready to start painting bike lanes and everything. I don't know if that'd be something really beneficial or contrary. But anyway, it's just a discussion. I let the ladies know we were having it tonight, and I don't see them here to argue it. So, and if you're telling them that if it's something that they thought they were passionate about, that they should probably show up. But anyway, anybody got any comments, thoughts whatsoever?
I have a problem with, definitely including the ATVs. Usually with the county, usually you're seeing the farmer going out there, driving the ATV, the razor, whatnot, checking their water, checking, actually working, doing something, not cruising around town. A lot of those ATVs, four-wheelers and everything else, how fast those things can go. And what was it, year and a half ago? Huge tragedy down south in Morgan. And I'll tell you, I'll vote no on it every time. Absolutely not.
Yeah, I myself would be opposed to it just because of the additional traffic. Plus, the speed of a golf cart is significantly lower than a regular car. And then the visibility and stuff. So that would be my thing.
I think it's long overdue. I think it's necessary. I think we do this. I don't think it's golf carts that we need to be concerned about. See, ATVs, you know, they're no different than a motorcycle, in my opinion. I go to a lot of different communities, and they already have enacted this. And it's, it's, it's helped a lot of people get around the community.
You know, I have a motorcycle. And one of the things that concern me is the most is there is absolutely zero safety on that. And, you know, your cars are set up in town. We've got 30 mile an hour speed. And I just don't know the safety in a golf court meeting a vehicle at 30 mile an hour or 25 mile an hour. I agree with you. If you were in a community that's where everybody drives a golf cart, okay. But not here. I mean, Flat Avenue's 35 mile an hour. You cross that street, I'm, I, I have mixed emotions. I agree with Jeff, I do. But I, a golf cart just does not have the safety equipment that a car does, meeting a car at 35 mile an hour. And we just saw a presentation by this man over there, but we got a lot of people doing 40, 45 mile an hour. And I just think meeting a golf cart would just be a bad thing. If we were in a community that's all we drove, then I think that would like, where Harold Davison, he lived in Florida, and his little compound that he lived in, nobody drove cars. Everybody drove golf carts. And it made sense. I don't know if you mix vehicle traffic, a 2,000-pound car with a, I don't know what a golf cart weighs, 500 pounds? I just don't, you got trucks, you got semis, you got, I don't know. I don't know. My gut instinct says probably not. But...
Just a question, do you think it's going to be more golf carts and more four-wheelers and ATVs? Which, which I understand a golf cart is slower. But a four-wheeler ATV, you're looking just like a motorcycle. A lot of those are like little pickups.
I'm, I'm, I'll tell you this, you're probably going to run into a whole lot more ATVs than golf carts. And honestly, the way most people drive an ATV, it's absolutely not very smart.
John?
I don't think it's worth counting this. Thank you.
Okay. Lauren, what do you think?
I guess moot point. Again, we got a lot of folks here that are leaning toward no. And, you know, I would like to see more folks be more mobile, but I also want to, I guess, recognize, like Doug said, that I don't want to set anybody else, I don't want to set anybody else. I don't want to set somebody up for a situation where they are one golf cart and, you know, thousands of cars and trucks who want to get around them, you know, it just think that it may be, involve a whole lot more discussion on how we police ATVs and golf carts on the roads so that we don't create a problem that we don't even know could exist right now, unintended consequences. So probably at this point, I would just go with the majority, say no. But if there was enough people out there who wanted to come and talk about it, doesn't shut the door permanently if things change and we see a lot more, more of a golf cart community, I just don't really see it. I'm afraid that we would have a lot more ATVs. And that could not, I don't know, might not mix very well.
All right. Well, I think that it looks like that we got more people that really are against it and everything. So I think, you know, of course, we've got to remember we're representative government. And so if we do have, you know, a lot of the citizens or good representation that's telling us that they're interested in it, then I think we can revisit it again. But I think for right now, for what the interest we've had, and especially nobody even showing up tonight, I think everything sounds kosher that way. So. All right. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ms. Curtis?
Thank you, Mayor. All matters listed under item 14 consent agenda are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
Alrighty, so I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to accept the consent agenda and be...
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Okay, so having a resolution by Jim Parks, second by Jeff Morford, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
All right. Reports by officials and staff.
Mr. Nate?
Okay, just a couple of things for you. You noticed you had your open enrollment packets in front of you tonight. So if you'll get those filled out for us, and I know Jennifer set the deadline for you guys at the next council meeting. So if you, if you want to take them by HR and drop them off, if you've got questions, feel free to go ahead and do that. Otherwise, just bring them to the next council meeting for us. Also, just wanted to, I know Casey went ahead and took off, but also just wanted to, big thanks to Casey. This is Casey's first year, full year of handling the budget and everything. And also thanks to you guys. This is a long process, but, you know, figuring out where that $105 million needs to go and how it's to be spent and everything is a very important process for us as a community. And so I always appreciate your guys' time through this process. I appreciate everything that Casey was able to do this year and take over and streamline a lot of the stuff that you guys didn't even see behind the scenes. And so staff did a really good job through the budget process year, this year, and I'm really grateful for the group that I have working at the city right now. And then the only other thing I was going to throw out, just schedule-wise, so you guys are aware, we're getting down to the last couple of weeks, hopefully, of our paving for the season. We've started some of the concrete work and some of the stabilization on the two streets that we did waterline projects on. We're trying to get the curb gutter and sidewalk poured over by the middle school, hopefully by the first of next week, so they can then follow up and pave that section of street over there. And we'll get all the paving knocked out at one time. They're telling me that hopefully within the next three weeks, as long as the weather holds out, we will have all that stuff taken care of for the season. So, and that's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Chief Sharp?
First thing I was going to bring up was, we're looking at purchasing a golf cart for traffic enforcement, but I think I'll cross that off. Secondly, as you know, we've been focusing a lot on traffic over the last few years. We've really been working pretty hard. And I want to commend our staff as well for doing what I think is a good job. Knowing that for the past eight years, we've worked with minimum staffing levels of three on a shift, probably 80% of the time or more for eight years, knock on wood. Today, we graduated our last person out of FTO, and we're now fully staffed on patrol for the first time. This last weekend was the first time in at least eight years that we've had five people on both shifts working. And we did have 52 traffic contacts in that one day, which is back to, you know, that's very good. That's more than we would have seen for years, just because you don't have that time. So I think we're seeing a big impact on that in the short term already. And then, next thing is Blue Santa. That's coming up again. We're getting close to that Christmas time. So November 15th, we've set that time for us to be at some of the different businesses collecting toiletries and non-perishable food items. I know you're aware of this, but for the public's benefit, for the seniors, we've been doing this for probably close to 30 years now, where we've been collecting non-perishables. And I wasn't talking about them, Jim. We've been collecting non-perishables and toiletries for some of the seniors that don't often get anything at Christmas that are unfortunate enough to not have a lot of funding. So we will be out there collecting that this year. We're doing something a little bit new in asking businesses if they're interested in having collection. We will bring a box to them for collections also, so we can get collections at businesses. And we're also partnering with the schools to do some different things to get some collections there. So we're hoping to open this up countywide and get more. I think the most we ever served was in the 70s, 80s. I think we can, we can reach a lot more people. So just want to bring that to your attention. If anybody's interested in participating in that, we'll be taking those donations starting soon, November 15th. Or if you want to set up something in a business, we'll be happy to have that too. That's all I have.
All right. Legal?
No updates. Great to be here. Thank you.
All right. Anything from anybody in the back? In case, this meeting's adjourned.
No, it's not.
Oh, biz meetings and announcements, Ms. Curtis.
Oh, you're in trouble now.
There are three bids that we have out open. It is the 2025 Inside Main Street Storm Subaru Improvements, which is due on November 17th. And there's the 2025 Street Department Single Axe Dump Plow Truck. And that is due, excuse me, November 21st, 2025. And there's also a request for proposals for a fixed base operator for the Fort Morgan Municipal Airport, and that closes on November 10th. Then your next upcoming meetings are the Museum Heritage Foundation, which is this Thursday at 4:00 PM. November 4th is the city council regular meeting and also Election Day. And then there is the Senior Center Advisory Board meeting at the Senior Center, November 10th. Now you can adjourn your meeting.
Okay, for the second time tonight.